A week. You know, we've always invested in this employee group in our district. They are our first point of contact for our students. They're the ones that are welcoming them on the bus, checking in with them, building those relationships, and they're the last ones that they see is before they go home.
The relationships that our drivers build with our students just sets them up for success each and every single day. We're honored to honor them, and we certainly want to make sure that from the secretarial staff in the transportation department, the garage staff, obviously all the drivers and monitors, we just can't say thank you enough for all the work that they do.
I love my bus drivers. I love my office staff. I could not come into work every day if I did not have them.
Became a bus driver initially, honestly, it was because it worked with my school schedule. Once I started doing it, I became attached.
I am successful in my position here because I am supported from the top all the way down. I could not take care of my team, my bus driving staff, the community, all of our students. I could not do that without the support of the administration building, and that means everything to me.
We truly appreciate everything you do. That's really been part of this celebration this whole week is to let our entire transportation department understand just the role, the critical role you guys play in this district. The first line of defense is sometimes the last line, and you need to feel supported, and you need to know that you're valued and that you're important.
If you want a job that is fulfilling, if you're part of overall operations that makes school work and work for our kids and our community, what better way than to serve in the transportation department?
Happy Transportation Week!
Houzz Pro offers an easy-to-use 3D design tool that helps clients visualize and get excited about your plans for their project. Create true-to-scale 2D floor plans and 3D...
Welcome to Warren Township. Located on the east side of Indianapolis, where we invest in the future by connecting tradition with innovation. Our caring staff invests in relationships by engaging the community and growing our Warren family.
Warren is amazing because I have never felt like I couldn't be myself, and that's something that's really important to me because, you know, when you're in your classroom, it's kind of like your home.
The key piece about Warren is there's a sense of connectedness, there's a sense of family, there's a sense of unity. There are many people who work at my school and other schools in Warren that are not only current employees in Warren, but are graduates of Warren Central High School. And that sense of community and family runs deep when you were a student in Warren and you come back and you serve in Warren. So I've noticed it since day one.
Warren, I think, is unity, responsibility, trust, camaraderie, and it feels like a family.
Warren Township has this kind of bond because of, you know, you seeing them at the stores, you see the bus drivers at the stores, the kids at the stores, and the kids do not forget you. And it's not just the kids that grow attachment, their parents, the adults grow attachments to you. It gives you a sense of being in a group, in a knit family, and that's what Warren Central creates.
We recruit and retain talented people who feel valued and celebrated being part of our Warren family. We offer competitive wages and benefits. Staff also receive training to become masterful practitioners who can connect with students.
I know when I started, I didn't knew how to strip a floor, or so they helped me. So as a group, we're our family, we're Warren.
We do professional development, not just during the school year, but during the summer. There are many opportunities throughout the year for people to grow their skills, improve their capacity, and when you invest in people's social, emotional health, it pays dividends for students and for staff morale.
Warren truly is a community, and once you get in it, I don't think that you would want to leave, you know, because there's so much support, and, you know, not just from, you know, the other teachers, but also from the administrators. Everybody wants you to succeed here.
The pride of the east side really is a good way to address it because there is great pride in what we do. The way we serve kids, the way we serve families, the way we connect with the community, it's all done with a sense of pride. So I think pride of the east side is a great way to explain it.
I think you have to love what you do. I think that's, at the end of the day, that's what makes you good about yourself, knowing that you gave it all and have pride of what you do.
I feel that Warren is a limitless place to grow, but you have to come with the mindset and the heart to want to reach out and be a people person. You come there with the attitude that you're going to do all that you can to make it a better place to work, I think you'll be just fine.
Come and join our Warren family to help us invest in the future. Explore current job openings and apply online.
Math is so boring!
Ladies and gentlemen, if you can rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. We're going to now move on to Julie French for our moment of inspiration.
All right. My daughter and granddaughter, she's almost three, made a turkey out of construction paper, and each day, my daughter has been asking Pikachu what she is thankful for. The first day, she was thankful for mommy. The second day, she was thankful for Dora the Explorer. Somewhere in there were the dogs, her TV, which was really the computer because she likes watching Blippi. And I'm going to say I'm thankful that, at one point, she listed Pop Pops and Grammy as one of her things she is grateful for. As for me, this has been a long year. We started school in January of the 2021 calendar year, and we were virtual. It was still part of the 2021 school year, and the kids were out of school. Not so grateful for that one. But this year, we started being in school, and I'm grateful for that. In April, my father passed away. Not grateful for that one, obviously, but he was very healthy until his illness. And although we knew we did not have a lot of time with him, he was fairly healthy. He was not in pain and stuff until probably the last week or so, which I am grateful for that as well. I mean, he was 79 years old and had a good life. I say this, and I am old. I'm an adult. I can handle all of this. Now, our kids, they're younger, and they've had a lot of things that they have been grateful for, but they seek, they, I think, at this point are tending to focus more on the not grateful. And I think we, as parents and teachers and administrators, need to remember this and continue doing what you guys are doing so fabulously, as I've seen on the chat on Facebook and stuff like that, how well you are taking care of our kids. Just remind our kids that they do have things to be grateful for and help them list them. I think when you sit there and you just think of all the things you're not grateful for, it's hard. But when you look at each item and you say, okay, not grateful for this, but what am I grateful for that has come out of that? And so I just encourage you to continue to remind your kids, when they're feeling not so grateful for things that are happening to them, help them seek out and find things that they are grateful for. It will make them feel a lot better, and it'll make you feel good, too. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Julie. We are going to move on to the superintendent's report.
Good evening again, board. Want to highlight a few things from this past month. I and Mr. Oriana have been out visiting schools. We've visited six schools this far, and we'll be visiting three more schools tomorrow. In addition to that, I was able to visit our high school in Walker Career Center. And Julie, to your point, it has been a hard year. Our staff and teachers and kids are doing the best they can, and I just want to congratulate them for getting this far and continue to support them to finish out this semester. I want to highlight our Equity Leadership Meeting. We have a District Equity Leadership Team led by Kate Schwartz and Masimba Taylor. And our last meeting, Kate and Masimba had our participants define equity through the lens of jog, our jog skills. So really tying those two things together, fascinating conversations. And then there's the rest of my meetings for the month of October and November. Couple of spotlights I want to spotlight, and I know some of our board members are part of our Rotary. This past week, we gave out 60 new shoes to our Rotary, to our middle school students. I want to compliment all of our teachers and parents for participating in our first K-12 district-wide parent-teacher conference on October 21st. That's the first time we've had that for all of our students and parents. Couple of weeks ago, I attended the National Blue Ribbon School Recognition with Kristi Merchant and Ashley Shea. Mr. Dorsey showed me dancing last night on the stage, and that wasn't supposed to get out. It was dancing, I tried to dance. Yeah. And I want to highlight Allison Woods, James Taylor, and I will be part of a presentation for the Indiana Superintendent Association on December 7th. We're going to highlight our SEL work, particularly around Invest in the Whole Child, and highlight our Morehead Community Resource Center, so we're excited to do that. I know several of the board members are participating in our Thanksgiving outreach that's being done through MCRC in our schools. And Julie, I would just echo, I'm grateful for the good work of what's taking place thus far in Warren, and I wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you so much, Dr. Hanson. And now we're going to move on to board comments, beginning with Terry.
Good evening, everyone. Julie, I really liked your moment. I think there's a lot to be thankful for. I mean, we have wonderful teachers and transportation support help everyone in our district. I don't have much to say. I'm looking forward to helping out with our Thanksgiving outreach, and that it's very important just to take time and be thankful for what you have. It's been a tough couple 20 months, but we've really have come a long way. So with that, welcome, and we'll see you later.
Thank you so much, Terry. LaShawna?
Good evening, everyone. And Ms. Julie, I'm glad you made the list. I know that would have been heartbreaking. I'm thankful for everyone in the district. Being on the board has given me a different platform because I'm used to sitting from the community lens, so being on the board also, it just kind of makes it more holistic. And with the Thanksgiving outreach, I don't have a report for Liberty Park, but I know for MCRC, we will be giving out almost 600 baskets for our families in Warren that have signed up. So I'm just glad that the district, Dr. Hanson, has allowed those resources to be able to be pushed out into our community and that our families know that we are investing in the whole family and investing back in our community. So very grateful for that. I also sit as a member on our Waif Board, and I just want you to save the date. We will be doing our gala, and it will be April the 14th. It'll be from 5:30 to 9:30 at the Marriott East. So as we get more information, I will definitely announce those updates. So again, thankful for everybody, all of our support staff and our teachers. You guys are doing an awesome job.
Thank you so much. Gloria?
Good evening, everyone. I want to give a special shout out and thank you to our great superintendent, Tim Hanson, his awesome administrative secretary, Kim Asbury, and Super Janine Templeton, all of my extraordinary fellow board members for being so kind, compassionate, and loving during my recent loss of my husband. Thanks for being there for me. Also, a special thanks and shout out to Chief Pettis, Officer Harris, James Taylor, Marcus Clayton, Dennis Jarrett, Todd Nalen, for reaching out to me with words of encouragement and compassion. I want to thank Carol Graham and Deana Cushenberry, our former superintendent and secretary, for their expressions of love and encouragement. If I overlooked anyone, please forgive me. I want to thank you from the bottom of my heart. One more thing, I'm a Christian, and I want to thank my God, Lord, and Savior Jesus Christ for saving my life. Right after my husband passed, I caught pneumonia. I almost didn't even make it to the funeral. I had to leave the hospital, and they allowed me to go to the funeral. And that pneumonia almost took my life, and I am just thankful to be alive. I thank Howard for coming to my rescue during one of my really bad episodes, and he told me what to do, and it really helped save me. I was choking to death, really. Right now, I'm sad, lonely, and I miss the presence of my husband. This is the first time he has missed a school board meeting. But like Julie said, you know, we have to look at what we're thankful for. I'm thankful for the years that we had together, and I'm going to get better with each passing day. So thank you, have a happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you, Gloria. Julie?
I just want to say to everybody, hang in there, and I hope you have a wonderful Thanksgiving. And that's it, I'm going to be short today.
Thank you, Julie. Dennis?
Yeah, good evening, everyone. I'd like to say thank you to all of you, because for all your work you do, and I hope you continue working like that because you work like that. Dr. Hanson and his team work hard for you and for your children, and I say thank you.
Thank you so much, Dennis. We're going to go slightly out of order, and I'm going to go next. I would like to thank the high school in particular for those K-12, actually, pre-K-12 parent-teacher conferences that took place. I have two high school students, so it was nice to be able to touch base. With that, I would also like to thank the high school teachers. At 10 or 15-minute blocks throughout the day, there's obviously not enough space for 180 students to cycle through, or however many they have. And every teacher that I reached out to who was already full was able, already had a plan in place as to these are the times I'm meeting parents, at other times, and was able to work everybody in. And so that was really great that they were flexible and able to do that. I attended the ISBA Budgeting and Finance webinar, as well as the monthly Jane Polly meeting, board meeting. I would like to say it was nice this year at Halloween. There were children who came to my door, so that was a good change. It was good seeing little kids out there with their families, older kids out there with their friends, going around and having fun again. It was just a really, really nice change. With the Roman Park Science Olympiad team, I went to the Carmel scrimmage at Carmel High School, and we had a great day. I have been able to, I refereed Vex Robotics. I was a head ref up north for the first time since March of 2020. So that was nice to be able to go do that in person again. I attended the Nike Midwest Regional last Sunday. If you think about what the weather was last Sunday, that was a whole event right there. And it's been a long month, but I think, to go back to what Julie said, we have a lot to be grateful for, and it's important that we keep those in mind. And with that, I'm going to go to Howard.
Good evening, everyone. Like the superintendent said, this has really been a really a tough year for us with all the things that have been going on. But in particular, these last few weeks have really been tough on our Warren family. I'd like to take this time to recognize two women of Warren who are no longer with us and have moved on to glory. Lindsay Lewis passed away on October 27th. Lindsay was an elementary school teacher at Morehead and Stony Brook for over a decade before becoming a registered nurse with the Community Hospital Network of Indianapolis. Veronica Tyler passed away on November 2nd. Veronica dedicated over 30 years of her work life to MSD Warren Township. She retired in 2011 from her receptionist desk position here in this headquarters. She even covered shifts after she retired. She was the hospitality ambassador for Warren Central football and basketball games and worked many other events as a volunteer for about 10 years or so after that. 2018, she even ran for an elected position on this very board. Please join me in a moment of silence for both of these great women who served this community in a very great way. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Howard. Terry, do we have any board correspondents?
No, we do not.
Thank you, Terry. And with that, I am beyond thrilled to recognize Jay Tian as the Student Council President and hear her report.
Hi, good evening, everybody. So I'm here to let you know about what Warren Central has, like, our student council has been setting up this past couple months, even though with COVID, we were, back in September, we were able to have our homecoming, also our first outside, or outdoor homecoming, and we had to limit the amount of people, and we strongly recommended masks. So that was the first step in trying to get things back to normal, I guess you could say. Other than that, Student Council as a whole, we have been also collaborating with middle schools around our district, like Stony Brook, Brookview, or, yeah, Stony Brook, especially Creston, and we've been doing a lot of hands-on activities where our students, our Student Council members can volunteer and like earn points so that they can stay in the group, such as, right now, we are also doing HUA, which stands for Huddle Up Against Hunger, where we are strongly having people bring in cans, canned foods, and we're also accepting donations, which is all going to be given back to our community. Donations, we are having our goal of $4,000, and we are trying to strive for 15,000 cans this year. And so with that, we are also doing a Children's Christmas Party where we have teachers from Warren Central sponsoring one, or at least one, possibly more students from different elementary schools within our district as well. And so we've sent forms out so we can, you know, get those students in, and then therefore our teachers here can be able to sponsor those kids. And we have a party on December 10th from 4 to 6, and that's when there'll be a whole rotation where all the kids can come in, and every kid walks out, you know, happy with, you know, something to look forward to, because in a way, this is more about giving back to those that might not be fortunate enough to get anything during the holidays. And that goes straight into HUA as well, because there are families out there that are in need, which is why we are really strongly encouraging everybody at our school to go donate as many cans as you can. And with that being said, those are two big events right now, and so if you would like to follow up more with any of our events, you can follow our Instagram page, which is WC underscore STU CO. And that's all I have for today.
Thank you so much. It was good seeing you. And you do not have to stay for the next meeting if you do not want to. It is up to you.
Can I say it was nice to have our student representative?
It is lovely to have our student representative back. And so next, we have Allison Mandell, the mayor's neighborhood advocate. Thank you so much, Ms. Mandell. We always appreciate your announcements. Terry, do we have any yellow cards?
We have no cards today.
Thank you. And now we will move on to the consent agenda. The consent agenda consists of the approval of minutes, financial reports, including payroll claims, claim register and electronic payments, year-to-date summary of fund balances, the human resources report, field trip requests, permission to accept gifts and grants, and use of school property. Do we have a motion? LaShawna's made the motion, and Gloria has seconded it. Is there any discussion? Hearing and seeing none, we will take a vote. And the motion passes. Thank you so much. We will now move on to our reports, including our standard COVID safety protocol review.
Board, as I said to us in August, each month I would bring to you our most recent COVID data and make recommendations as needed to provide the safest environment for our students and staff. As of yesterday, our positivity rate in Marion County was 6.46%. If you remember, in October, it was around 7.1%. So we've been hovering around 6% to 7% for the last two or three months. You can see when we came back from fall break, our COVID numbers were relatively low. We are seeing, both in our schools and in our community, a slight increase in COVID cases. cases. So we're just keeping an eye on that. And, you know, I think some of that has to do with the colder weather and combining those things. So at this time, my recommendation is that we maintain the current protocols that we have in place that we set forth in August and continue to follow the executive orders sent forth by Governor Holcomb on September 1st. With that being said, we are hearing that he is not going to extend his executive order into December. If that is the case, we will, my recommendation is that we will continue the protocols that we have in place. If new protocols are sent out either through our Marion County Health Department or the State Department Health Department, we will take a look at those and reconvene for a recommendation.
Thank you so much, Dr. Hanson. Next, we have our multilingual learner program report with Kim Burke.
Good evening, Dr. Hanson, President Burke, and members of the board. I'm excited to be here tonight just to share an overview of our multilingual learner program as well as to give some highlights. To start, our multilingual learner program does support the board goals of seeking to, seeking the improvement or involvement and participation in the entire community and the learning process. We also support the strategic plans of our district of investing in the relationships and with families in the community, of meeting the needs of the whole child, as well as investing in the future of our graduates. To start, I'd like to just kind of share a little bit about what the multilingual learner program is because that is a new term. If you look at the bottom of the screen, you're going to see some terms that kind of describe what the program, maybe some terms you've heard before of our program. English learner program, the English language learners, English as a second language. We've had a variety of names over many years. Currently, the federal government still recognizes English learner as the program term, but the Indiana Department of Education has started to encourage districts to make a change, to be more additive and more encompassing of the populations that we have. And that's why we're moving towards changing the name to a multilingual learner program because it does represent the linguistic repertoires of our students and our population. Because we, you know, when we think about our multilingual program, that does encompass students that have consistent experience with languages, including English. So not even just two languages, but multiple languages. So we want to be mindful of that and representative of that. These students, when they enroll in our district, they're given a home language survey. Based on their responses to that form, we then can assess them to see if they would qualify for our program. Our program would assess them in English, giving them a proficiency level. And if they qualify based on the criteria for enrollment into that program, then they would qualify for services where we would, our goal would be to work on helping them to improve their English language and listening, speaking, reading, and writing, as well as just grade level content knowledge as well. Currently, we have 23 teachers and 14 assistants that work in that program. Also thinking in our multilingual learner program, we also have a dual language program that is currently at Pleasant Run and Stony Brook. So we are in kindergarten through fifth grade. That is a program that we've slowly been developing and I hope to come back and share more about that program at another time. But that is a program where our students are learning in two languages. So they're learning in Spanish and English throughout the day. So that's another exciting program where we are really fostering our students' languages and just really trying to encourage them in their growth. I always like to do a top five when thinking about our program, just so that you kind of have a little bit more background about who our students are. Currently, we have students from 38 countries that, most of them are born here in the United States, but the other ones that are on our list are Honduras, Haiti, Guatemala, and Mexico, and then a few, definitely quite a few others. When we look at languages, Spanish is our majority. Probably we have about over 1,900 students that speak that language, followed by Haitian Creole, Tagalog, French, and Vietnamese. We have 39 languages, though, represented in our district, so we are very diverse. Our Haitian Creole population is probably our second, second one that's growing at the most. We currently have about 78 students in the district that speak that, and we've continued to gain more students over time. When we look at our multilingual learner numbers, this gives you a look at K-12, what our numbers look like by grade. And we currently have 1,432 students, but this is growing daily. I think every day we enroll more students, so we are growing. As I mentioned earlier, our students are given an assessment when they enroll. Usually, we give them a screener assessment, but we also give them an annual assessment. So this assessment is something that we give in January to February, and our students take this assessment so that we can monitor their growth from year to year. There's two types of assessments that we give. One is the access for ELLs, and this one is given to K through 12 students. And again, like I said earlier, it assesses our skills in listening, speaking, reading, and writing. The second test that we also provide is the alternate access for ELLs. And this one is an assessment that is also given for first grade through 12th grade students, but these are students that are identified as multilingual learners, but it also are students that have a cognitive disability that prevent them from being able to participate meaningfully in the access for ELLs. So it is a much better assessment that can really assess their growth as well. So it's nice that we have both of those options to test our students. With the WEED Access, we are given proficiency levels of a 1.0 to a 6.0. So this chart here shows you kind of the descriptors of what that means to be at each proficiency level. It gives you an idea of kind of what the expectation is for what they're be able to process, what they'll be able to understand, produce, and use. Our multilingual learner program supports students that score a 1.0 to a 4.9. So they receive services from our teachers and our assistants. Students that reach a 5.0 to a 6.0 are considered exited. So that means that they've kind of reached a fluent proficient English status, and they go into a two-year monitoring process. So we still try to support those students, provide them with any other needs that they have because still academic content is still challenging as we increase in our grade levels. And so we want to be available and supportive of our students with that. Here's an overview of kind of our assessment for the past two years, kind of how our students have performed on that assessment. You'll notice our numbers of students have increased. Last year, we only had 1,233 students, so we've already gained over 200 more students that we continue to grow in. But if you look, we stay fairly, fairly consistent with our proficiency levels. We don't have as many students in the 1.0 to 2.9. Majority of our students are usually in the level threes. And then, again, we have some in there are fours. But you will notice there was a drop in our exit criteria. So those students that exited at a 5.0 to 6.0, that also was across the state. We saw that, a lot to do with our pandemic, the way school was a little more, you know, either virtual or in-person and just kind of that mixture. So that was definitely something that we saw across the board. So I'm excited to see what our scores will be once we take it again this year and see that improvement from getting back into school on a regular basis. Now I'd like to move into a highlight for our program. And with that, I'd like to highlight a staff member, and that is Claudia Guzman, who's our bilingual family liaison. I had a dream of a finally, family, sorry, bilingual family liaison a few years ago, and I just knew that it was something that our families needed, that it was something that we would benefit our students and our district. And with the start of MRC, I kind of felt like this was the time to make this dream a reality. And so I was able to make this, make this position happen. And so I was super excited. Claudia was already a staff member of ours. She worked as a multilingual instructional assistant. She was already building relationships with families and community members, so she was just the right person for that, for that position. She was able to start that position in April of 2021. So she's only been at the position for a few months now, but she's already done quite a bit. Just to show you, one of the big things that she's supported is communication. One of the big things that we want to do is be able to provide information to our families in a language they can understand. And so Claudia has probably been the most beneficial in helping our district with communication, being able to make things that are translated and things that are available for our families. This graph here shows just an example of the in-person and over-the-phone communication that she's had. If you'll notice, the biggest one she's had is enrollment. So she's been a huge asset to our registrars and our schools, getting students registered. I would say the biggest, the one school that's probably benefited the most has been our high school. Our high school has used her quite a bit to register families. It's especially challenging to try to review transcripts in another language. And so she's been very beneficial in helping us support that. The other area that you'll notice is in information and resources. Claudia is a wealth of knowledge and she's been able to provide our families with support that they need. They're able to go to her to ask questions about digital content, about getting shelter, about getting food, about jobs. It's, the list is endless. You know, she's also been able to try to provide that interpretations, interpretive services with, for them so that they can be able to access things that are happening in our district and in our community. As I said in the previous slide, resources. She does a great job at making connections. There's a lot of community partnerships that she has already fostered relationships with that she's brought to our district, brought to MRC, like the Indiana Latino Institute, La Plaza, Global Village, Latino Coalition, and Children's Bureau. She does an amazing job at supporting events at the Morehead Community Center. She also wants to really make sure that all families are able to engage. She created a Facebook page. Again, just really great at building those relationships with people to provide those resources to them. And as I said, if you know Claudia, you know relationships is probably her number one thing. She is constantly wanting to meet with people and be involved in what is happening. She meets regularly with our students and our families. If somebody has her number, they pass it on to somebody else, and they pass it on to somebody else. That's kind of the pattern that happens. But she also wants to get people involved. You know, even just this year, she was able to work with our high school students and getting them to have a Latino, a Latino event at the end of October. She tutors our students. She also, I know she met with a third grade little girl at East Ridge just to be another adult in her life. So there's a lot of things that she does. Probably my favorite, though, is that she wants our parents to be involved as well. She's sent many of them to our adult education program, and she also tries to just get them to work for Warren. So if you, she's always about that. So I think that that is amazing, and I love seeing that on a daily basis. Right now, though, I'm going to ask her to come up just to say a few words as well because I want you to hear from her and just kind of what her thoughts and feelings are about this role that she was able to step into.
Good evening. As Mr. Taylor always says, "I will be brief, but brilliant." It is an honor to be here today. I would like to thank Kim and Allison for believing me and advocating my name for this position. I also would like to thank Morehead people for welcoming me in their team and for their very hard and tireless work, especially to Mr. Taylor, who gave me the chance to be part of his wonderful and dedicated group. And Morehead, we are family, and they make me feel very included in everything. For example, we just came back from a homeless conference in Alanta, where I have learned a lot about Maquenivento. I also met liaisons from all over the United States. We, as a district, are doing an excellent job with our Maquenivento and foster parents' families. This is my dream job, and I'm very happy with the opportunity to help my community. They come to the United States with traumas and fears, and I'm able to make them feel welcome and comfortable. When I meet them, I let them know they can have my support for any of their needs. I help them enroll their kids in school, rent assistance, Maquenivento, information about food banks and healthcare. In addition, I help the families to get appropriate documentation, referring them to community agencies, which includes legal assistance. I listen to them and their problems, and I refer them to appropriate services. I also keep them informed about the COVID-19 vaccines and places to take a COVID test. On the other side, I help the schools and administrators contact families. I interpret in IEP meetings. I help with transportation issues, technologies, issues, and education, such as Parent Evil and Parent Square. And finally, I always open to help my community in any way they need, such as information, education, or only listen to them. Once again, I would like to thank you all for this opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you, Claudia. I feel like she just echoes kind of what it means to do all of these things listed on the screen. You know, she does a great job of modeling what it means to invest in meeting the needs of the whole child, investing in the future of our graduates, as well as the relationships of our families and community. And I know that many of our staff members and people in our district do that, so I'm just excited to have her as part of our multilingual learner team, as well as the MRC. I'm just very fortunate to have a great program that we get to support so many students with. So thank you very much.
If we can have Ms. Guzman come up to shake the board's hands.
I'd like to say something else about Claudia, Dr. Hanson. The other day, I spoke with her, and I asked her if she needed assistance, and she told me, "No. I don't need nobody next to me because I love my job." That's Claudia, and I know she worked hard. Thank you, Claudia.
Thank you so much, Kim and Claudia. We appreciate your report. Next, we have Ms. Lynn Storm. And transportation.
Okay, can you hear me? Good evening, Dr. Hanson, President Burke, and school board members and guests. My name is Lynn Storm. I am the very proud director of Warren Township Transportation, and this is my lovely driver supervisor, Paula Smith. Paula is the quiet and calm, and I'm not. So we have a fabulous product to show everybody tonight. And I thought the best thing to do to start with is to show you a video about what our transportation department is going to be offering for our community. I'm a visual learner, and I think that everybody will understand the Tyler Suite that we have purchased for our bus, our bus and transportation department if I don't stand up here and talk and I just show it to you. And then I'll answer questions afterwards.
How can you enhance safety, improve communication, increase efficiency, and provide oversight of your operation? One solution does all this. Tyler Drive. It's one-of-a-kind software loaded onto a unique semi-rugged tablet. It's one-of-a-kind software loaded onto a unique semi-rugged tablet which is mounted on a school bus near the driver. Fully integrated with Tyler Student Transportation software, Tyler Drive provides turn-by-turn directions to each scheduled stop, manages student ridership, records pre- and post-trip vehicle inspections, and electronically logs employee hours. First, your transportation team develops routes for your district using your Tyler Student Transportation solution, Traversa or Versatrans, designating the safest, most efficient way for your students to be picked up and dropped off each day. When a driver logs into a Tyler Drive unit, their assigned run is uploaded using the exact route and stops you built. Tyler Drive provides the driver with route-specific directions to each stop, following district policy and safety guidelines. It can provide visual directions or audio-only with the screen blacked out while the bus is in motion. These electronic directions are significantly safer for drivers and riders compared to paper route sheets as they allow the driver to keep both hands on the wheel and both eyes on the road. They also make it faster and easier to onboard new drivers or teach sub-drivers a new route. At each stop, Tyler Drive shows the names and photos of the students who are assigned to board or leave the bus at this location. As students enter or leave the vehicle, they scan a radio frequency identification card, or RFID, over the Tyler Drive card reader. This creates a record of when and where the student scanned. The driver is also alerted to students attempting to board the wrong bus or exit at unassigned locations. As each student scans their card, their parent or guardian receives an alert on a secure, integrated mobile app. Tyler Drive has an internal GPS allowing you to manage vehicle location in real time or track and trace the vehicle location, speed, and heading of the vehicle at earlier points in time. Before and after each run, the drivers can undock Tyler Drive and take it with them as they perform their pre- and post-trip vehicle inspections. Tyler Drive provides a customizable checklist and can require a signature from the bus driver to help ensure a thorough inspection. Tyler Drive also manages employee timekeeping. Staff, including drivers, aides, and mechanics, can clock in or out on the tablet so that they don't have to go to the depot to punch in. With Tyler Drive, you can enhance the safety of your students, improve communication, increase efficiency, and provide oversight over your district's transportation. Tyler Technologies. To learn more, visit the web, tylertech.com/tylerdrive.
Okay, this system is nothing short of amazing. What we will be able to do for our families, can you imagine as a parent to get an alert in the morning letting you know that your student got on the bus? Now, the only changes for us in this system right now is while the RFID scanners will be mounted on the bus, our students do not have RFID cards. So what the driver will do is they'll hit an X, a red X, or a green check mark that says we've received that student on the bus. Or we do the same thing as they exit the bus. So when a principal calls me at nine o'clock at night looking for a student and wants to know if they were on the bus that night, then I'll be able to pull it up on my phone and see that. So these, these things for our parents and for our staff are going to be absolutely And of course, our point, our whole point is to ensure the safe transportation of every student, peace of mind for parents, the efficiency for district. MSD Warren needs an integrated and trusted student transportation solution from school bus routing, software, onboard tablets, and everything in between. Our new complete suite connects every aspect of school transportation management. We are state-of-the-art. We have a better system than most all of the townships and other school districts in Now, trip tracker, you didn't see much on there and that is how all of our activities and sporting events and everything are taken care of. And so we have a comprehensive trip management system. It's web-based for easy access. It's paperless request system. It's just been tweaked a little, but this is the same system that we've been using for years, which has just been upgraded just a little bit with the new Tyler Suite. Fleet Vision is our maintenance department. It monitors all of the preventative maintenance on the buses. It tells us when things are going wrong. Again, that is a system that we've been using for years, but it's also part of the Tyler family. So we're just tweaking it, upgrading it a little, and we'll continue on with our Fleet The mobile time clock, that is a piece that is available for us. And as the drivers are going to be able to clock in and out on the bus, the drivers and the monitors, this shaves off a little bit of time. Sometimes when our drivers come in, they'll want to visit, they'll clock in and visit with a friend and it might take them 20 minutes or so to get out to the bus. They can visit all they want, but they're not going to clock in until they get to the bus now. So that, my hope is, what I'm hearing from this system is we could save up to $150,000 a year from those lost minutes. And then my stop, you heard a little bit about, and that's what the parents are going to get the alerts for as the students are picked up. The other great thing about that is when I pull up to 10th and Post and I'm going to pick up, or I'm going to drop off a student, I'm going to drop off Dr. Hanson and I don't recognize the parent that's there, I can click on his name. It's going to show me his picture and then it's going to tell me who's allowed to pick him up. And then I can ask that person for ID. So this saves the drivers a lot of trouble and time trying to get through on the radio to talk to parents. They'll have that, that information right there. The GeoTab system is our new GPS system that tells us where the bus is at all times. It is currently, it's up and running. We have all those units on the buses right now, so we can track the buses all through the township. I can tell who's speeding. I get alerts if anybody is going six miles per hour. That's what I have my alerts set up as. I can change it to anything, but if they're going six miles per hour or over that, then I get that alert and then I can have that conversation with the staff member. Excuse me. But it tells us where they're at all the time. It also tells me where they shouldn't be at. So we have geo fences set up around places like gas stations and McDonald's and Cherry Tree and places like that where the drivers aren't supposed to be. And then Paula and I will get an alert if they enter those areas because the bus drivers are, they're not supposed to be there. So this, the system, the way that it tracks everybody, it can tell us accident if it's happened and it can also do a recreation. So it will show us if the driver veered off the road or veered out of their lane. So it's, this whole system is just, it's amazing. And then they already talked about the onboard tablet and all the things that it does. The onboard tablet comes off. The driver can walk around the bus to do the pre-trip and the post-trip. The onboard tablet cannot be used to go to Google. You can't play music on it. You can't shop on Amazon. It is specifically with the Tyler system and that's the only thing that it can do. And then the student ridership, we talked about that piece, about how we can see where the student is supposed to be, where they're not, where they don't get dropped off at, who rode the bus that day. This whole system is just amazing. Versatrans is our current routing system and it's just been upgraded again. And this system just shows us where the buses are going and when we add a student, what all that involves. So we do changes every day. The students are downloaded in our system. And then Versatrans tells us where the safe stops are. We're still constantly looking at that, but it gives us a good idea where the safe stops are for all of our students in the district. A rollout. Tyler Suite was purchased in August of 2021. September, we started doing the mapping upgrade. The mapping upgrade caused us a little bit of a hiccup and put us behind schedule about three months because our maps had not been upgraded with Marion County since 2006. So when they talk about a map upgrade, we're not talking about just where is 10th Street? We're talking about how wide is 10th Street? How long is 10th Street? How many addresses are on 10th Street? Is it one-way? What's the speed limit? So all of those things have to be taken into consideration before we can download all this information so our Versatrans knows how to do the routing portion. We've installed the GeoTab units. November, right now, we're finishing up the mapping process and we've begun our training. So November, December, we're going to have our training with our office staff. And then we'll move into the end of December and January, we'll get a core group of drivers of about 30 people and do a small rollout. And then the end of January, we'll start training our full-blown office staff and garage and all the drivers to learn the tablets and understand the new system. February, Hawthorne has offered to be our guinea pig. And so we will do a test on just Hawthorne and all of their students in that area to make sure that there's no kinks in the system before we go live in March with the entire township. Does anyone have questions? I know it's a lot to throw out there.
I do. We all know that we, schools get phone calls saying, oh, could you please have so-and-so ride home with so-and-so today? How easy is that going to be with this system for you guys to arrange that transportation of another student if they're supposed to go home?
It will be as easy today. It'll, it'll be as easy in January as it is today. Because when we make a change to our system in the office, it's just like if we've got a substitute driver that is going to have to take over the route, it's all downloaded into that tablet.
Okay. So our school is going to have to contact you or they need, or do the parents need to call transportation?
They could call, they would call transportation and let us know of that change. There's always emergencies, so we're prepared for that. Yes, next question.
The program sounds great. We get calls or I have parents that say, I work and I don't get an alert until the end of the day that my child didn't go to school. So does that kind of give a parent, if you already have the scholars preloaded, if I didn't show up on my bus route, does that also send my parent an alert to let them know I didn't come?
It's not set up to do that, but it's certainly something that we can do.
For the high schoolers, I think the parents, the parents would love you for that. I mean, and it gives them a sense of security when we get to that point, since it's not already built in. Because sometimes they leave to go to work early in the morning and they're thinking that their high schoolers are on the bus.
Yes.
They find out that they've been at home or where.
Well, and they, they will be able to set this up on their, their app as well. So they're going to see that Tim Hanson did not get on the bus this morning. Hate to use you as an example, but they, they'll have it set up on the phone. And this is good for the students too because they all have a phone. And so they're going to be able to see that the bus is two minutes away. Now, in Warren Township, for privacy reasons, we are not ever going to, we have the ability for this system to show where a bus is at all times. We could easily give parents the ability to track the bus through the whole route, but we're not, we've chosen not to do that. What it will tell them, however, is the bus is two minutes from the stop. The bus is one minute from the stop. The bus has left the stop. So, you know, it will give them all that good, but not too much information. We don't want anybody chasing the buses down.
But you did say it'll notify me if Dr. Hanson did not get on the bus. It won't send me an alert because if he did get on the bus, I'm the parent, it would alert me.
You would get an alert.
So that kind of works the same way.
Yes, yes.
Because the parent can say, oh, I didn't get an alert this morning. He must didn't get on the bus.
Yes, it's not going to give you that alert. Same thing's going to happen in the afternoon. They're not, you're not going to get that alert that he got off the bus. So then you're going to be thinking, did he stay after school? What, you know?
Right.
And you can always call transportation and we'll always call the bus and verify, double-check. Because rolling this out is, it's a lot. It's very exciting, but it, this is a lot of information. This is going to be absolutely amazing once we get everything online and going. But it's going to be a lot. But the safety and security of our kids is, is the most important thing and that's what this is going to offer us on the school bus.
In the video, it showed when the children got on the bus that they had a little card that they tapped and, you know.
Yes.
Did you say that that is not ready at this time?
That our students do not have RFID cards. Employees do, so the driver, the employees will be able to clock in and out, but our students don't have the RFID cards. We're investigating that to see what the cost is. So we've, we're working on that piece, but we just haven't gotten to that point yet.
Okay.
But that is an option. And we do have, we have all the pieces and parts to do, to do it. We just have to decide how we're going to roll that out and give every student an RFID card because it's expensive and make sure they hold on to it.
What would happen if one student showed the ID below to another student? What would happen with that student in the bus?
Well, are you talking about scanning, using somebody else's? Or the drivers are pretty good about knowing who all their kiddos are.
It also shows a picture on the screen that we have for the drivers.
Yeah, but what happened with that student?
We're going to have a picture of Tim Hanson, so.
I can get on the bus.
Yeah, as he, as he gets on the bus and we're going to give him a green check that he got on the bus. Now, if, if you get on the bus and try and say you're Tim Hanson, we're going to know something's up. The same thing if, if you get off at the wrong stop. The driver's going to know. And well, no, I mean, we have to report it. We would, they would radio it into the school and let them know that Dr. Hanson got off at the wrong stop.
Did the bus, the student? With the one ID or different ID, he can go in the bus?
No.
No, if he, if he's not our student, if he gets on the bus and we don't recognize him and his name, he doesn't have a name, then he would not be able to get on the bus.
If they need to stray, he don't go to school.
Well, now, we don't leave him in the street either. Typically, what we do is the driver calls into base and they ask to look up that student. And then we find out, is this indeed our student? And if it is, then we'll tell them one time only to take them to school and turn them over to an administrator because we don't ever want to leave a child behind anywhere.
Yeah, okay, I had, I had a similar question like that, but I think, I think you kind of got, got to it. But here, here's something else that I was wondering, and that is, does your Versatrans system still allow the bus to, when it stops, to have the flag go out and that information is deployed to?
Yes, our GPS system, the GPS system tells us when the bus swerves. It tells us when the bus comes to a complete stop. It tells us when it does harsh braking, when it takes off too fast, when it's speeding, when it's, the yellow lights come on, when the red lights come on on the bus. It shows us all of that information.
Okay.
How long is, how long is that data stored? Because that's a lot of information. How long do, do you store that information?
Forever, I think. No, there's not. Typically, we would save it to reports if we need to, but it's, it goes in the cloud. Yeah.
Everything through the glass.
Yes.
I just think this will give a lot of parents peace of mind, so.
I have a quick question too. And I don't know that it does it on this, but do our, when our stop signs go out, do we have cameras that take pictures of cars that fly past?
We do not. And that's, that is not supported by the Marion County Prosecutor's Office. So if we had those, we wouldn't be able to enforce that we couldn't ticket by that. But our police force goes by, the drivers write it up. We have a stop arm violation, they write it up and they can write a ticket for, based on that. And we can pull, we usually pull video from that. Most, all of our buses now have six to eight cameras on them.
So using this software, we'll be able to integrate our activity buses into it as well?
Yes.
Okay.
It's very exciting. Just very exciting.
That is, it's always good. They're always looking at the last minute for children to get on activity buses. So it'll be good that we have that record.
Yes, yes. And I just want everybody to know that this is not Transportation Spotlight. That's why I'm not dressed up. And I also wanted to thank everybody for everything they did for my department, my drivers and monitors in the month of October. They got such a They got such an outpour of appreciation. It was absolutely phenomenal. So thank, thank you all for that.
As always, thank you. Next, we have our construction update with Marcus Clayton.
Good evening, President Burke, Dr. Hanson, members of the board. This month, we're going to do something a little bit different with this construction update. And I can see the relief on some of your faces. You don't want me reading 32 pages of construction updates. So before I, I get there, as always, our goal is to maintain financial stability and investment efficiency. So sit back, relax, and enjoy the video.
Well, so moved. We get a vote?
Good evening, President Burke, Dr. Hanson, members of the board, and to all of our Warren family. Welcome inside Warren as today, we're going to take a look at our several construction projects throughout the district, starting here at Warren Central High School. Welcome back. If you look behind me, you can tell here on the campus of Warren Central High School, we have a lot going on right now. And here to talk about exactly what the next steps are, as well as our current status, site manager, our Phase Two site manager here to complete Phase One from Skelman, Tracy Hiddle. Tracy, sir, how you doing this morning?
Good morning, how are you?
So Tracy, you guys have been at it here since last spring. So if you can just share with the Warrior Nation, where do we stand in November of 2021?
At this point, we are in the process of completing the parking lots on the west outside of the building, the north lot, the south lot, which is Lot Four and Five. And the idea is to get the binder down in the parking lots that are accessible prior to the asphalt plant closing, which is going to be as late as mid-December, as early as the first week of December. So we're right now on schedule to meet that goal.
So Tracy, talk about some of the challenges we've had along the way. We, we hear the word stabilization a lot.
Well, it just depends on, we have a third-party testing agency that tests the park for us. And you are far better off to stabilize the parking lot than you get more of a 20-year parking lot.
Okay, so we have this multipurpose field that I know you guys have been working hard on for the past year. The actual field, the surface is complete. Explain to us what's going to take part in finishing that project completely.
Okay, we just finished the stone caps on all the columns and I had all the masonry cleaned up. So now we have, there was an ASI issue prior to my coming to the job. ASI 15 requires a mow strip, maintenance strip underneath the fence. They are in, before my meeting on the 23rd, there was, uh, once that mow strip is done, the ornamental fence, which is sitting down on the side, can be installed.
Tracy, thank you so much for joining this morning. I know you guys, you guys, you got your hard hat on. I'll make sure next time I have my hard hat and we are off to Pleasant Run. Welcome to Pleasant Run Elementary School. And I'm here today with our site manager from Skelman, Patrick Kirby. Patrick, how you doing this morning?
I am doing fantastic, sir.
Well, Patrick, we've heard all these neat things going on here at Pleasant Run, just the transformation, it's amazing. We are in a classroom right now. And, you know, I saw the classroom before, just the, the needs that we had in terms of storage, flooring, as well as just opportunities for students to collaborate. So if you could, just talk about some of the changes that we have in, in this instructional space we have.
Sure. Starting with, one of the things we're doing for more of a health issue is getting rid of carpet. The LVT, luxury vinyl tile, is easier to clean, maintain the surface and everything else. We don't have the germs, bacteria that build up again. We got rid of the chalkboards, upgraded to marker boards. Nice, easy to clean up. You don't leave the chalky dust. Again, it just, less dust, less mess. Throw off the case work, the lower case work here. We used to have the old metal shelving and stuff. We've gotten rid of this. We've got to put mine in the dust. The, gotten rid of this with some solid surface window sills. Now, one of the things we're going to have, this whole wall here, because of the issues, back order, this is going to be a four bow product, which is a tackable surface. So from corner to corner, that'll all be that surface there. Plus, as you see around the marker boards, it is a tackable surface already. Incorporating the, you know, soaps, paper towels, the sinks in the rooms, making sure everybody can stay clean, especially with the virus stuff going around, that we can maintain a healthy environment.
Now, what about all this storage area here? I mean, this is, this is different.
Yes. The, basically, everything in here across the top is for the teacher to store different products for teaching. These down here are name tag holders. So each child will have its own little cubby, just hang their, there's some hooks up in here, hang their jackets, and also to put backpacks and everything else in.
So wait a minute, so kids, elementary kids are going to have like their own mini lockers?
Exactly.
Wow.
Yep, it'd be very nice and it's going to keep their stuff sorted out too, so we don't have to worry about mixing up at the end of the day. Now, I'm looking at the ceiling tile, the lighting. This is a LED lighting system, which is also going to save us energy. We have brand-new fan coil units up in the ceiling. As you can feel the warmth in here right now, it's all tied into the system. Everything's working. And also, we have a dentiflu feature on the lights too. You know, some people might say, hey, there's the level of your voice is how light it is? Or just turn them off completely for teaching methods.
Well, I'll tell you what, this is definitely creating exceptional learning environments for our students. So we're very appreciative of the progress that we've made so far and the progress we'll make when all of this is complete, when we get a chance to come back. What about this overall, just, you know, where are you guys at right now in terms of just the, the outdoor construction?
With the new addition outside, we are actually pouring a slab today, this corridor, maintains security or the safety for the kids to get out of the building. Steel is out on the parking lot. Monday, we'll start standing all the steel, getting all the erection, the decking and everything else in. At the same time, we'll be pouring all the floors inside. So I'd like to see us enclosed probably by mid to late January. Putting a roof on and the basins are just waiting to get started, so.
All right, well, we appreciate your time and we'll see you next month. We are at Grassley Creek Elementary School, the home, not only of the Prospectors, but the 2021 National Blue Ribbon School. It's a way to go Grassley Creek. As you can see, we have a lot going on here on the campus of Grassley Creek. And one thing I want to point out is just over my left shoulder, you see this large hole with these big pipes. This is something that has taken place on all of our campuses. The city now requires that we provide a certain amount of underground drainage for our pipes. The days of the retention ponds, those things are going away. So the infrastructure that we build is so important because not only does the city require, but it creates a safe environment for our students and for our community overall.
My name is Phil Barshevsky with the Skelman Corporation. Been out here for about a couple of years now, making this school right.
All right, Phil. So we started here ago, last year, and we've made significant ground in terms of just where we're at. We've already completed Phase One, which we'll see some shots of. We completed Phase Two. Now we're on Phase Three. So just talk about where we stand right now in terms of the completion of this project.
Okay, so currently Phase One was the new cafeteria, the new kitchen area. So now Phase Three is renovating that old space into new conference room, a new clinic, a new workroom, just more storage too, for the office ladies. And everyone just getting a clean, clean, fresh look out here and just making it more open, more windows. And we currently just began our Phase Three classroom phase, which is eight classrooms right now on the north side, third and fourth grade. Really just a full gut, new MEP, a new window system you'll see coming together here shortly. Now, we're in the old cafeteria kitchen area. That way was the old cafeteria. This is the old kitchen. I think we're standing in the old cool and freezer. We've turned it into offices, conference rooms, teacher lounge to your right, two new staff restrooms just for the office personnel. Looking our way through the hallway. To my right will be a pretty good-sized conference room, access from here and also the main corridor. And then we've got the storage, storage space where the testing material will be stored. The new clinic area, kind of show the way out of the clinic. Lockable storage there. The clinic will have its own restroom for the kids. New cops will go in here as well, with curtains, new lighting, and then kind of her nurse's workstation in here with the refrigerator. Epoxy floors, the floors will be just like the cafeteria. The workroom. Currently walking through where the mail slots will be. This is your main corridor connecting the office area. This will be mail slots in here, just a bunch of cabinets and a printer and copier through the new existing slash new workroom area. And then just some more storage. So this is Phase We currently in, shooting to turn over the middle of December, get it moved in and start the next one.
This video will be on demand on HGTV. Janine Templeman will be uploading it after the, the meeting is concluded. I believe everyone has a copy of the, the PowerPoint. So if you have any questions at this time, as far as what will take place the next 30 days, we could talk about that now or I'll be around after the, the meeting and I can answer your questions in.
I just want to say that was very creative and it was very interesting. What a way to go.
Wait until next month.
Okay.
I'm going to get in one of those trucks next month.
Okay.
Can you bring us a popcorn next month?
Quill? Thank you.
Thank you so much. And with that, we are moving on to, I believe Terry answered earlier, but just in case, do we have any green cards? No, we do not. So we are moving on to action items, speaking of Mr. Redwine, Quill Redwine, with policy 8510.
Good evening, Dr. Hanson, President of the Board and Board Members. I am here on behalf of the Wellness Committee, asking you all to approve the revised wellness policy. And if you have any questions, you will be able to contact Pam and Haley.
So moved. So I have Julie making the motion to accept it and LaShawna as a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing and seeing none, we will move to a vote. And it passes. Thank you so much. And I want to specifically thank the Wellness Committee and Mr. Redwine for the $125 line item for excessive balances. It made my heart very happy to see, so thank you. And with that, we are at policy 5111, Mr. Russell and legal settlement.
Good evening. Last month, I brought 57, or 57, 5111 to, to you guys for discussion regarding legal settlement with just some minor updates, looking for your approval tonight. Happy to answer any questions.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Terry made the motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
I heard Julie slightly first, so Julie made the second. Are there any questions or discussion? Hearing and seeing none, we will move to a vote. I can't. I'm assuming it, did it pass? Okay, we, we lost the screen, sorry. Oh, okay, and it, motion carries. I apologize. Now, back to Mr. Clayton with policy 8500, the food service program.
Last month, I had the opportunity to share with you the revisions, the proposed revisions to board policy 8500, specifically new language that consisted of the board does not discriminate on the basis of race, color, national origin, sex, including sexual orientation or gender identity in its educational programs or activities, including the food service program. That was the first part of the revision. The second part dealt with meal charges, specifically any unpaid meal charges. The new language was specifically prohibit any stigmatizing of students with unpaid meal balances. And as I mentioned last month, we are a CEP district, so we don't, at this point, confront those type of challenges. But nevertheless, here's the revisions before you.
Thank you so much. Do we have a motion? Thank you, LaShawna. Do I have a second? Ms. Williams, Gloria. Or is there any discussion? Hearing and seeing none, we will move to a vote. And it passes. And next we have policy 8606, still, Mr. Clayton.
Again, last month, I brought for you board policy 8606 revision that addresses cellphone use while operating corporation motor vehicles or other motor vehicles to transport students is prohibited with the lone exception, an emergency 911 call.
So moved.
I'll second.
So I have Julie making the motion and Terry seconding it. Is there any discussion? Hearing and seeing none, we will go to a vote. And that passes, which moves us on to a bid recommendation.
Bids were received on Friday, November 12th, for the purchase of installation of a new air-cooled chillers for Sunny Heights Elementary School, East Ridge Elementary, as well as Morehead Community Resource Center. We received bids from five firms. Lehman's Mechanical of Anderson submitted the lowest bid. However, it was discovered that Lehman had used a Dalton chiller quote, "from a product that does not meet the specification." As a result, we made a quick transition to the second lowest bidder, Griner Brothers, and they are willing to perform the project per specification. With the board's approval, we will move forward with issuing the notice of, notice to proceed and contract for this service.
So moved. Julie made the motion to accept the bid. Do we have a second? And a second from LaShawna. Is there any discussion?
Well, we have our, we have our experts back here. Appreciate you guys coming out tonight. Those are some of the behind-the-scenes hardest workers in the, the district. Those are some of the behind the scenes hardest workers in the district that are pretty hands-on with all of our HVAC and cooling needs. They probably could speak even more, provide more detail than I could. But specifically, and feel free to assist guys, the chiller is an essential component of any HVAC system as far as the heating and cooling controls, things of that nature. And as we've learned just over the past year, we have several schools with this need and just being responsible stewards of tax dollars and as well as the, some of the additional funds we've received, we have a pretty extensive plan to replace chillers throughout the district.
Yeah, we recently replaced Raymond Parks.
We don't talk about that. Sorry.
I could share with you after the meeting. Yeah. You'll have a big piece of that.
Can I ask what? It says that the chiller that the first three lowest bidders originally were bid using didn't match specifications. Can I? What, is it just that the specifications given by the company that made the chiller were inaccurate?
For the bid that they submitted, Lehman's, the bid they submitted, they couldn't do it at the bid that they provided. They were using a little bit cheaper chiller and it didn't meet the specification for exactly what we were looking for.
Thank you. Appreciate everybody's input, gentlemen. And with that, we will move to a vote. We need chillers. Not having chillers leads to bad things. And that passes. Thank you. And thank you to our maintenance folks in the back. We really do appreciate everything you do. Now we are moving on to resolution 59221, tax anticipation warrants with Matt Parkinson.
Good evening, everyone. Tax anticipation warrants are a cash flow tool that our school corporation has used for years. The operations fund is funded primarily by property taxes. Property taxes are received twice per year, once in June, once in December. Tax anticipation warrants allow us to receive in advance the proceeds we're going to receive from the operations fund, property tax levy. And so we'll receive these proceeds in January, pay a portion of them back in June, and pay another portion of them back in December, both times when we receive property taxes. Essentially, this provides continuity in our cash flow over the course of a year. I'd ask for your approval for the resolution and I'm happy to answer any questions anybody has.
Do we have a motion? So moved. Julie made the motion and LaShawna seconded it. Are there any questions or discussion? Hearing and seeing none, we will move to a vote. And the motion carries, which puts us on to compensation increase for administrators.
I'm excited for each of the next three items. We set out at the beginning of this school year trying to find ways to creatively provide competitive compensation for all of our employee groups. And we were really pleased with where we landed on the teacher agreement, which was ratified by the school board last month. And so we come to you requesting approval for similar proposals for our administrative and support staff groups this evening. For the administrative team, our proposal is to essentially mirror the teacher agreement. The average teacher raise for this year is just over $3,200. So the proposal that we've put forward is provide a $3,200 raise to each member of our administrative team. To pair with this, just like with teachers, we're making a modification in what our health insurance balance looks like on premium payments between the employer and the employee. Moving forward, each of our administrative employees, just like teaching staff employees, will be paying a 90-10 split where the employee pays 10% of health insurance premiums. To help cover that increase for the first year, just like with the teachers, we're proposing a one-time stipend that will offset the cost of that health insurance premium. The employee can take it either as a direct payment or as a deposit into their HSA. I'd ask for your approval for the resolution. I'm happy to answer any questions.
So moved. Julie made the motion. Do we have a second? LaShawna seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing and seeing none, we will move to a vote. And the motion carries, which moves us on to classified staff that is paid hourly.
Our, as all of you know, our classified staff has just been working their tails off this school year. And we're thrilled to bring to you a proposal that's higher in dollar amount than what we've been able to do in recent years. And that's just, we're in a position resource-wise to be able to put forth a meaningful proposal this year. When it comes to support staff, we have a couple of different goals we're working toward. Our support staff that are on the bottom end of our pay scale, those rates of pay are, it's tough to compete in a tight labor market we have now. It's important we recognize those folks. In the same way, we've got a lot of folks who have been here for many years towards the top of the pay scale. We tried to find a way to competitively recognize those. So what we're presenting to you this evening is a combined pay increase. Every support staff employee paid on an hourly basis would receive a 2.5% increase. And then on top of that, we're proposing to also raise everybody's pay by an additional 75 cents per hour. So the minimum pay increase that an hourly support staff person will see this year is a little bit over a dollar per hour or a little bit over 4%. Some of our support staff members are going to see a pay increase as high as $1.86, almost up to a 10% pay increase. Like we've done in previous years, we're also requesting approval for a loyalty stipend for those who have been with us for at least 20 years. That loyalty stipend is $350. And finally, in the same way that we put forth a proposal for teaching staff and administrative staff to cover the health insurance premium increase for the year, we're proposing the same for our support staff. So I'd request your approval for the proposal as submitted.
I make a motion.
I'll second. So I have Gloria making the motion and Julie seconding it. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Matt, I'm sorry for clarification and for the record. So what will be the stipend amount for the classified staff or the insurance premium?
So the stipend amount for classified staff is going to depend upon the type of insurance plan that they're enrolled in. And what we're going to do is cover the specific cost increase between 2021 employee insurance and 2022 employee insurance. So an employee who's enrolled in the single plan will see a one-time stipend of $819. An employee who's on employee and child will receive a stipend of $766. Employee spouse is $716. And for those support staff employees who are on the family plan, they'll be eligible for a one-time stipend of $1,343. And similar to teaching staff and administrators, at the employee's decision, that can be paid out as regular compensation or it can be put in tax-free into an HSA.
Seeing no other discussion, we will move on to the vote. And that passes unanimously. Excellent. And now salaried classified staff to finish us out.
Yes, thank you. We have one more for this evening. Last month we came to the board requesting your approval for a $2.50 per hour additional pay increase for the rest of this school year for our hourly support staff. There were a group of employees who didn't quite meet that standard, but we think sort of in philosophy should be compensated in a similar way. We have about 40 employees around the school district who are support staff members but aren't paid on an hourly basis and instead are salaried employees. So these are going to be family engagement liaisons, lead instructors at the preschool, several folks in our technology department. And so the proposal that we've put forward is to provide these employees with a $2,500 stipend split over seven months. And what that comes down to, that basically matches a $2.50 per hour pay increase. So it's recognizing employees who are salaried, support staff with the same type of pay increase we've given for the remainder of the school year to our hourly employees. I'm happy to answer any questions and I'd request your approval for the proposal.
I'll make the motion.
So Terry made the motion and LaShawna seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing and seeing none, we will move to a vote. And the motion carries. Thank you so much for your time this evening. And now the school, we're moving on to discussion items, beginning with the 2022, 23, and 23, 24 school calendars and Mr. Russell.
Good evening again. Tonight I bring to discussion the 2020, 2022, 2023, and 2023, 2024. I mess that up every time, it just doesn't roll off the tongue at this point. For discussion, first I want to talk about 2023 and I want to highlight some, I won't call them significant, but I will call them changes to the calendar that, again, are in proposal right now with the plan of bringing these back in December for approval. One of the two main things that I'll point out, the start of the school year on a Thursday instead of a Wednesday. As you recall, when we added any learning day, we certainly had the opportunity, that was an additional day of school. So our teachers have three contract days before the start of the school year. If we keep a traditional Wednesday start, that makes our teachers' first return day to work from the summer on a Friday. This would allow them to return to work for the first time coming back from the summer on a Monday. And then also our parents on the calendar committee certainly appreciate the start later in the week for us to start on Thursday, then go through Friday, kind of regroup, and then go to start to school on Monday again. So that's a highlighted change that was requested by both parents and teachers on our staff. The second and probably more prominent when you're looking at the calendar, especially if they're color-coded, is the inclusion of two additional planned e-learning days. As we've looked at calendars around us and as we look to find a multitude of ways to be able to provide our staff relevant professional development time, the utilization of e-learning days has been one of those commonly used strategies for us. Again, throughout the past several years, what we've learned about school calendars is consistency is our best friend. So we're trying to develop a system and the calendar committee tried to respect the system of how, if we're going to utilize e-learning days, how do we make that as predictable and consistent for our families as possible? Obviously, we know they can be used in the event of weather, when that takes place, but how would we do that? So we already have a practice of having an e-learning day on Election Day. That's a Tuesday and we've done that. We used to have no school, but we started that as e-learning day. We have a new practice over the past couple of years of having the Tuesday after President's Day as an e-learning. So we're kind of on a trend of Tuesdays, so we kind of stuck with that same philosophy. This, as you see in the 22, 23 calendar, and really the same when you look at the proposed 23 and 24 calendar, it would be the inclusion of an e-learning day the Tuesday after Labor Day. So for 22, 23, that would be September 6th. And then the Tuesday after MLK Day, which would be January 17th. We thought we could set a nice foundation for our calendar for years to come off anchoring e-learning days off those four traditional dates. Labor Day, Tuesday after Labor Day, Election Day Tuesday, Tuesday after MLK Junior Day, and Tuesday after President's Day. So it could be not only predictable, but beneficial, obviously, for our staff as well within that. I teased the calendar committee because typically the meetings go something like, we want to start school in the mid-August, we want to have two weeks off for fall break, a week off for Thanksgiving, two weeks off for Christmas, two weeks off for spring break and get done before Memorial Day. Well, that's somewhat impossible to have all of those things included into there. So you can see we've maintained the traditional two-week breaks for fall and spring intercession. Remember, those are critically important for us to provide enrichment, remediation opportunities for our students, plus the ability to give people time off of both school and work. And you can see at 22, 23, it kind of accomplishes all those and we're real excited about, you know, the possibility of that calendar. I will transition to 23, 24. The dates don't always line up perfect and this is a perfect example of that. Really, it's the exact same philosophy you saw for 22, 23. We're just transitioning it to the new calendar. The one exception you will see is if we start school on a Thursday and continue that trend, we will not be able to end school before Memorial Day. I'm still working with our calendar committee to get feedback on the priority of, we have to pick one priority with this calendar, meaning, do we start school on a Thursday and then before Memorial Day? Or do we start school on a Thursday and then the day after Memorial Day? So again, I'm not prepared with a formal recommendation tonight. Again, this is discussion. We'll get these to you as soon as possible with plenty of notice. But again, the big lever we're pulling here is the increase, just the small increase of e-learning days, planned e-learning days, specifically for our staff for professional development. Happy to answer any questions about these or research more before I bring this back in December.
Ryan, can you speak to the early dismissal days right before December? Is that something new for us?
We have that in place now. That's been in place. One thing that I failed to mention, we did maintain the parent-teacher conference day, K-12. Historically, the reason why we never had a parent-teacher conference at the high school is because we didn't have a dedicated day for it because we utilize that dedicated day, teacher contract day as a records day for the high school staff, or at least a half records day for the high school staff. In order to get them their records time, we had three one-hour early releases in December. And that one-hour release would allow them to grade their finals that day and submit their grades so that their cards and transcripts could be ready to go. Because as you know, we reschedule our students and schedule our students based on their credit attainment over the winter holidays and winter break. So it's critically important for us to get the grades in for that and that's why we've always provided teachers time to do so.
On the 22, 23 calendar, there are two days listed. Should that be three?
Yes, 23, 24 has three days listed.
The idea there is to provide three days, correct?
The idea is to create three hours, yes. So yes, there should be three days listed.
And that, we got that from teacher input as well, right?
Correct. We thought that was more valuable than having an e-learning day the first day of January for records. I'll get those updated and get them to Kim so you guys can see them.
Thank you. So now moving on to policy 2240.
All right, 2240, controversial program issues. Just a quick word, we already have this policy on the books. The specific update really is about, defines the approved use of topics. So basically it's saying if it does not cause a substantial disruption in school, it could be in a topic approved to go or approved to be able to utilize in an educational method. So all the other language in there is consistent with our current policy, but really it's just a language update specifically to defining what a controversial issue is. Happy to answer, yes ma'am. Yeah, in the policy already, it's determined by the principal. So right now for those to be approved, it needs to be reviewed and approved by the principal, obviously with our support. But anything that potentially would trigger a, something as causing a disruption is by policy, the teacher or whomever is supposed to submit it to the principal, the principal approves and they can move forward with the education, as an educational opportunity. approves, and they can move forward with the education, as an educational opportunity.
Do we have something to kind of mitigate those kind of situations when they come up?
Yes, I would say our building leaders do an exceptional job of anything that would rise to the level of potentially causing a disruption, filtering that really through my office in those terms. We have opportunities that come up just with random curriculum opportunities and things. The board already approves all curriculum through our textbook rental process, but we try to point out any specific things, obviously, that may rise to that level when they do. We also have a review process that's currently in board policy already, where if someone would have that very specific issue, whether it be an employee or parent, the policy in which that is reviewed and guidance is provided. So it does piggyback on that. I couldn't, Mrs. Tripple, I couldn't tell you exactly what that policy number is off the top of my head, but I know I've reviewed it because we've had to utilize it in the past. Yeah, absolutely.
And now, we're moving on to policy 5410.
You say 5610?
5410, promotion.
Okay, sorry.
Yep, you're good.
5610 too, so.
Yep, that's next.
Screened. All right, promotion, replacement, and retention. So this specifically one is looking to provide clarification that in the event of a special education student, promotion, retention, or placement will be directed and advised by the case conference committee. Again, we have these practices in place. This is just a language update from the last revision, that case conference committee makes that determination for those particular students.
Now, 5610, please.
Suspension and expulsion of students. This one provides just a little, this one provides in writing in policy a practice that we currently have in place and have had in place, so it's really an update. Students who are suspended have the ability to make up any work they do during the time of those suspension, and we've had that. This one adds to clarifies that they can also make up tests or quizzes. We certainly don't want any of our students, regardless of whatever mistake that they have made, to lose out on any educational opportunities. And that includes, if they miss a quiz or a test, they have the ability to make that up with no penalty or whatever in terms of their grades.
And finally, for your purposes, policy 9700.
All right, 9700, relations with special interest groups. This specifically, I don't want to say similar to controversial issues, but specifically is language updates based on Indiana codes. Special interest groups, specifically, I can give you a pretty specific practical example when this happens. It directs the participation in any materials of these groups to be approved by the principal. Well, what would that be? Traditionally, a few times a year, we may have the Boy Scouts of America, or someone who wants to pass out information to students in the cafeteria during lunch, or Girl Scouts, Boy Scouts. It really, Indiana code defines them as a patriotic youth organization and requires school now to provide them an opportunity to distribute that information. We still have the ability to review what anyone wants to send out, and certainly approve or not approve, but specific, again, to Indiana code, we want to make sure that our students have the opportunity to receive those things you see in newsletters, things that you see sometimes in recruitments for those organizations. The other thing which is somewhat connected, at least it's connected in this policy, is really just a clarification in connection with policy 6605, which is specific about crowdfunding. As you know, through your consent agenda, you already approve already all donations and gifts. This just connects that crowdfunding donations will be approved by the Board of Education, obviously, and that's funneled through Dr. Hanson as he gets those onto there. So connected, I guess, but in the same policy.
Thank you so much for your time this evening. We are now moving over to Mr. Clayton. Beginning with policy 753002.
In adherence with Neolak recommendations for discussion, propose a revision of board policy 7530.2, and the policy has been revised to comply with the House Enrolment Act, HEA 1070, from 2020, Indiana Code 9-21859. And some options in this policy, in the subsection entitled Safe and Appropriate Use of Cell Personal Communication Devices, including cell phones, have been removed and replaced with required language that complies with the above cited HEA and Indiana Code provision for discussion.
Thank you. And then we also have policy 6250. Oh, I'm sorry, that's Mr. Parkinson. I didn't read far enough.
The item for discussion this evening is a revision to policy 6250, specifically to amend the language in our policy relating to ADM counts. That's our twice yearly count of students. DOE issued guidance in 2020 that provides that school corporations should collect documentation verifying that a student is a resident of the state of Indiana. And so what this policy language does is brings our policy in line with DOE issued guidance. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you so much, Mr. Parkinson. We appreciate your time this evening. And with that, we are at closing comments. Terry.
Thank you, everyone, for the reports. I know a lot of work goes into those, and I'm very thankful and grateful for those. To everyone, I wish you a very happy Thanksgiving, and just enjoy your time with family and the ones that you love.
Thank you, Terry. LaShawna?
I'll ditto Terry, but I just want to also commend you for looking at our staff from all angles and perspectives, from the higher administrators to our awesome and much-needed support staff, and being fair all across the board with showing increases and trying to help remove some of those barriers with the health. As we know, a lot of staff are unhappy throughout our city, and I'm proud to say that I know that you all have worked hard to try to accommodate our employees and our staffs, to make them feel appreciated, and it makes our job a lot easier. So thank you so much.
Thank you, LaShawna. Gloria?
I just want to thank everyone for coming out, and I would like to say ditto to Terry and LaShawna for what they have said. Thank you for all the reports that were given today and all the hard work that you're doing. And again, have a happy Thanksgiving, and look forward to seeing you at the next board meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Gloria. Julie?
Happy Thanksgiving, everybody. Have a great holiday and get some rest.
Thank you, Julie. Dennis?
Thank you again, everybody, and you do a good job.
Thank you, Dennis. Howard? He's taking off his mask.
Yeah. I just, you know, the compensation increases for administrators, classified staff raises, I just want to ditto what the other board members had mentioned, you know, the additional stipends for salary class. I believe this clearly demonstrates the concern we have for our employees' pay increases, which allows them to help to offset the health insurance premiums. This is a recognition for their hard work and commitment to the, to our kids and the educational process. I mean, I really believe that. This provides, you know, compensation raises and stipends that I believe is long overdue and well-deserved. So I think it's a good thing, and I'm really excited that, you know, we've got some smart guys that work for our superintendent to come up with ways to help compensate and show our appreciation for the hard work that our employees are doing, so administrators, teachers, and all of that. So this is a good time. This is really a good time. And I don't see anybody making placards and, you know, storming the doggone administration building because not getting paid enough, and I think folks will. And so I think that's going to, that's going to help. I think that's going to help. So a good job, and just good job. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Howard.
Want to give by no ideas.
I would like to discuss something that Mr. Clayton had in his presentation for construction, that the city is now requiring underground water retention, which has always, of course, been the thing that, like, fills my heart with joy, having water underground. That's been something I've been pretty vocal about. So congratulations to the city of Indianapolis for finally catching up with the times. I do want to, once again, congratulate Dr. Hanson, and specifically Mrs. Shea and Mrs. Merchant for their trip to DC and receiving the Blue Ribbon School Certification for Grassy Creek. I also watched the live stream. I just didn't make fun of your dancing as much in public, but it was just, it was really great to see. And then I do want to end with how I end. Every November, my favorite day of the year is coming up. Turkey Day is the absolute best day of the year. I am so happy that we are able to do it again this year. Last year was really tough. And so one more shout-out to Jason Brooks for everything that he does, to put together everything in the Raymond Park, Liberty Park, school area, wherever we end up this year. I am just really, really thrilled to be able to do that. And I wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving. We will see you in December. With that, the meeting is adjourned.